I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, on the agenda we have public service announcements, the organization of the board, business of the year presentation. We have a few public hearings from National Grid, town administrator's update, comic report, a lot of action items. We can list them shortly, but first of all, public service announcements. Jamie?
I'm on, thank you.
Mary? No. Chase?
I'm on, thank you.
Mary? And I have none. The organization of the board, Robin?
So I believe I call for nominations?
Yes.
My first round of free aug with all of you. So then I would accept nominations for Chair of the 2024-25 Board.
I'd like to make a nomination for Jamie Goodwin for Chair.
So we have a nomination for Selectman Goodwin. Are there any other nominations for Chair?
Will he accept it?
I will, yes.
Yeah.
Okay, is there a second? I'll second. Discussion on the favor?
Can't get out of it now. Careful what you wish for. She picked the right agenda to pick so up. Twenty-eight items.
No one can say I'm willing.
I think you take over the nominations.
Oh, I take over. All right, do we have any nominations for Vice Chair?
I'd like to nominate Chase Kavinsky for Vice Chair.
Second? Any second?
Oh, I'll second.
Okay.
I thought you said you seconded.
Well, I'll second.
I'll second it.
All right, all those in favor? Any eyes have it? Those are the big two right now, right?
Clerk.
Okay. Do we have any nominations for Clerk of the Board of Selectmen?
I nominate Mary Dowling.
I'll second it.
Got to be on time to read those public service announcements.
All those in favor? All right. All right, we are moving to item F, Business of the Year Presentation.
Oh, I gave you my agenda.
Yeah, I have one.
Good evening, I'm Sandy Gibson Quigley. I'm the Chair of the Sturbridge Tourist Association. I'm here with Brian Amity, former Chair of the Tourist Association and longtime, longtime member.
Mr. SDA.
Yeah, Mr. SDA finally stepped down last year. Tonight we're here to award four businesses, four Sturbridge businesses, with our Business of the Year Award. Brian, perhaps you can tell us how long we've been doing this?
All right, in the fall of 2019, myself and Kevin Filczek, who was the Economic Development Tourism Coordinator at the time, had an idea that we presented to the board and for awarding businesses of the year in the four categories that we have of Eat, Shop, Stay and Play. So in February of 2020, we presented our first awards. Little did we know that there was going to be something happening in March that was going to throw a monkey wrench into everything. So for the past, for a couple of years, we had to put everything on hold. And last year we reintroduced it, and now this is going to be our third annual award. So we're glad to do this. I'm glad the President Board has agreed to do this. And there's four awards being given out, but believe me, every single business in this town deserves the award for being, surviving the past three years.
Absolutely. And again, each, each of the awardees receive a grant of $1,250. Previously, the 200, it's intended for marketing purposes.
Correct.
Previously, the $250 was also intended, it was $1,000 marketing, $250 for membership in the Central Massachusetts Tourist Association. But that has gotten a little iffy because they've had different categories and some of them, some of these businesses are already members. So we simply decided this year to say, they can do what they want with that $250. So they are each getting an award, a plaque and an award of $1,250. And we certainly enjoy, we had many more votes this year than we had last year, and we appreciate all the people who participated. So tonight we would like to begin with the awards. I will do one and I will let Brian do the rest. So if you would come up here as we announce. The best place to stay that was voted in is the Thousand Trails RV Park. And we are happy to award this to, I'm sorry, Kim Procone. Please come up here, Kim. This is a longtime Sturbridge resident. Hosts thousands of campers, as we know. This was previously in an iteration of Outdoor World and has changed ownership, and Kim has been managing for two years now, two, three?
Four.
Four years. And she tells me that they have many, many longtime residents, and these are people that, again, we're excited to have here, who come all the time and participate. I'm sure they use our trails and our other, partake of our restaurants and other places as well. So they host thousands of campers annually, and we applaud their, Kim and her staff on their campground with their dedication and their commitment to quality. I surround the region, we have several RV parks and campgrounds, and it's certainly great to honor someone with this. So Kim, congratulations.
Just, just a comment. With all the hotel properties and being the hotel guy that I was for many, many years, this was kind of a surprise for me, but then I, I thought about it and I said, no, this is a new way of, of how things are going in the hospitality field, which I'm glad, and they have a nice, nice property there. So I'm glad they got the award.
I did take a tour when it first opened. It's a beautiful spot, and it's come so far from the way it was before. And I'm sure the way it was before was beautiful at one time, but by the time that campground closed, we really, it really stepped up very nicely. Thank you.
So the next, the next award that we have is in the shopping category. Now this, many, we have so many shops, nice shops here in town. And this property has only been around since July of last year. And already they've made a big imprint on the town. They brought a little bit of Italy to the Fishtail section of town, so, which is great. And I want to make sure I tell you the Fishtail section of town because I know the people who live there want to be recognized. So in the Business of the Year, in the shopping category, we have Tudi Quanti, who are the award winners, and we have Mike and Laurie, oh, you're going to have to pronounce your last name because I'm going to butcher it.
You're an Italian, it's clutch out.
I'm an Irish. So come right up. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you very much.
All right, congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you for opening your shop. It is wonderful.
And you know, this is another example of, a lot of people say there's nothing to do in Sturbridge after five o'clock. Well, they have created events, okay, at their establishment where people can go. They're going to have, they have wine nights and things. So that's like many businesses here in town are really going out and creating some, some nightlife here in town, so. Congratulations to both of you.
Thank you.
Much success.
Thank you very much.
Can I just say one more thing about them?
Listen.
I like to eat and everything. If anybody needs beautiful chocolates too, it's not just Italian foods, unbelievably large chocolates, just like they have in some of the better chocolate shops in like Boston and Faneuil Hall.
A big impact on Sturbridge and a big impact on my waistline.
Those little almond nuggets. I think you like them and I like them.
They also have good sauces, and I go there for my anchovies.
Mary, just to follow up on that, if you watch like Channel 5 Chronicle, which I do a lot, they do a lot of food things and everything around Boston and everything. I wish they would come to Sturbridge because they do not know what they're missing here. You know, with all the.
I'm out, I have to work on that. You have a lot to work on that.
All right, Jamie, it's up to you now.
I'll call Chronicle in the morning.
No, I agree though, we're a real little well plethora of like.
They have come in.
Restaurants.
They have done a few things. But now they did that a few, number of years.
Yeah, they need to do more. All right, so the next award winner, I know this young man very, very well. This is in the food category, in the eat. So so many great restaurants here in Sturbridge to choose from, and the voting was very, very strong. And this young man has got his start working for his parents at Village Pizza. I remember those days, okay? So they, they instilled some good, great values in him. And I also had the pleasure of coaching him during Pop Warner Football as well. So we say been around. So he's also taking on a new venture, opening up the new, the old friendlies, and it's going to take a little while, right Teddy? But you know, nothing goes really smoothly, if you think of this. So Teddy Gies, Teddy does a trivia night at the, at your establishment, correct?
Thanks.
Yeah, I think my sister-in-law goes there too. So I'm happy to present with Teddy Gianopolis, the Business of the Year Award in the food category.
We're looking forward to the new establishment.
When is that million dollar?
You're not supposed to ask.
We're not supposed, no. Do you know how many residents want to know? Don't you get those questions all the time?
Somebody in your classroom wanted to know.
Yes, we had Reed across America, and our town administrator was kind enough to go to Burgess, and we opened it up to questions about, you know, the community and everything. And a lot of people wanted to, a lot of students, sixth grade students, wanted to know when that new pizza place is opening.
The sixth grade isn't ready to show up.
Sixth grade is ready.
All right, our final, our final category is in the play category or the fun category. This is a repeat winner. This is our first repeat winner. But I, I watched the voting on this, and there was some strong voting for some other locations. But when you take the play category, you think of Escape, The Escaper Room, Raps gallions, Trails, everything, you can fall into that category. Hemlock Ridge, the golf course, good votes. But the repeat winner is the Old Sturbridge Village. Jasmine Rebus is going to be accepting the award for the village. You know, I have close ties to the village, so, because I used to work there. But I'm happy to present this award to you, Jasmine. Please display it proudly, you know, put it in Langdon House where it belongs, and they'll see it there, or they can put it in the visitor's center so people know. Congratulations.
Thank you very much for everybody who participated. And again, we will say that we, you participate, and we'd love to have you go look at our website. That's been up for a year now, and we're doing a new push on that that we're very excited about called experiencesturbridge.com. So go visit that and go visit all of our businesses in Sturbridge. We have a lot of exceptional businesses.
Please, people out there, solicit the businesses out there. We don't need Trader Joe's, we don't need Hooters, okay? Like people say on the community. Get out, get out there and really.
I'm talking about Trader Joe's.
And I got to say, I'm excited by a lot of the new businesses that have popped up here in town. And despite what people say, Sturbridge is open for business.
Thank you.
All right, so we move on to our, the time is about 6:45, so we can start the public hearing. We have three, I believe, the first two involving National Grid. Chase? Yeah, don't have to read it. Clerk, oh, Mary, I forgot.
National Grid has made a petition to the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen to install one JO pole on Cedar Street, beginning at a point approximately 1,500 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Hamilton Road and continuing approximately 15 feet in a western direction. Install one 40-foot class three pole number 5925 between poles 59 and 59 through 50 to service new pole being installed 150 feet into property 233 for new home being built. National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways. The pole hearing will take place on Monday, May 15, 2023, 6:35 PM at the Sturbridge Town Hall, second floor, Veterans Memorial Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge.
Okay, so vote to open the public hearing. Mary Lou, how do you vote?
We don't.
Oh, we don't?
We don't need to take, we got an opinion.
A motion to open it though, right?
No, we open it by reading the public notice. No, we got, we got that from council years ago.
You're, you're in trouble.
So we're not redundant.
And we said we had to motion to open and close.
So who's from National Grid here?
Yes.
Hey, everybody, my name's Mike from National Grid, Mike Maszeg, 939 Southbridge Street here in, well, not here in Worcester, but in Worcester. Yeah, customer, this is again, you, you got it correct. New, new customer service going at 233 Cedar Street. This is one proposed pole in the public right-of-way as there will be another one on private property. From there, they will go underground service. So that's, that's really all I got. It's, it's one pole, this work request. I'm also here to represent the other ones here today. So any other questions, I'm here to answer. This one's one customer service at 233, new construction.
Looks like we have a couple of comments from the public. I'd ask that you come up and state your name and address. Oh, come on. Yeah, take a seat or stand, whatever you prepare.
My name's George Vlongus, I live at 224 Podunk Grove. And the question I want to ask is, when I looked at the diagram we had, it looks like the pole's going to be pretty close to my well, you know, and.
I think this is, we're on Cedar Street right now?
Yep, this is Cedar Street.
Podunk Grove.
Yep, that one's next. You're on the second one. The first one, Cedar Street, the second one is Podunk.
Yep.
You can just sit there, but, so, does anybody have any questions on the pole at Cedar Street? All right, so.
Maybe the board.
Oh, just the board? Any of the board? All right. Do we have a motion?
You need a motion to close it.
Close it.
Oh, I.
See, I was half right.
You were half right.
What, half wrong?
We'd like the chair. Do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
How do you vote? All in favor? Eric, yeah, okay.
The document's coming around.
Or the document's coming around, but we need to vote on the actual pole, right?
Yep.
Eric, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to approve the pole.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All in favor? All right. Great. All right, so now we're moving on to the 6:35 hearing about the Podunk Grove Pole. Mary?
Yep, hold on. National Grid has made a petition to the Sturbridge Board of Selectmen to install nine JO poles on Putnam Road, beginning at a point approximately 588 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Podunk Road and Bushnell Road and continuing approximately 4,906 feet in a north direction. Installation of new P47 to 50, P52 dash 50, P53, P63 dash 75, P60T 50, P67, P67 slash 50, P68 dash 50 and P69 dash 50, starting approximately 117 feet north of existing P47 Podunk Road. National Grid also requests permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables and wires in the above or intersecting public ways. The pole hearing will take place on Monday, May 15, 2023, 6:35 PM, Sturbridge Town Hall, Veterans Memorial Hall, 308 Main Street, Sturbridge.
If I might just address the board quickly on this. So I met with National Grid last Friday morning. This is part of a larger project. If you recall, the solar farm that's going up in Charlton, and you all accepted a roadway upgrade, roadway improvement plan from National Grid. There's two phases, there's a phase they're working with DOT on, and then this is a portion of, part of the transmission portion of that project. So you will later be getting the remainder of this project down the road for Charlton. So this is just phase one of this particular project. National Grid is already working with one property owner who wanted a shift on the pole. I believe he spoke with you, Mike, already. So they are willing to work with property owners on this. Any vote you give tonight is still contingent on conservation, and DPW, I believe, still had some things that they needed. So any, if you do approve the pole tonight, the approval will be contingent on conservation approval and DPW approval.
And does that need to be reflected in the motion?
Yes, that would need to be reflected in the motion.
I mean, a lot of, which is fine, we can reflect it in the motion, but also a lot of times we get it after conservation and the DPW pass on it. They usually write a letter, and so I'm wondering why we're doing the reverse tonight.
Because this, this project was really complicated in its two phases, and they're running into some challenges, I guess, with DOT on the second phase. So they're trying to move forward on this for timing purposes.
So I did get a chance to go out and look at the location, proposed locations on paper on there. Most of the times, like the first pole, it's very obvious. In this situation, since we're talking about multiple poles in multiple locations, I basically requested that they stake out the locations so that I can review them hard in the field to make sure any issues, like this gentleman's, that there is a well or there's an existing opening that could be used as like a vacant lot, that we don't want to be blocking any future development, or there is a drop inlet, like there was different things that when I went out there in the field, without them being physically staked out, that I couldn't approve. So basically what I asked them to do was physically stake the location of the proposed pole so that I could discuss with them more in concrete terms where they were going. What I was told is until they move further on the project, yes, they want to get the pole hearing done, but they won't be installing poles right away. So that is something that's going to happen down the road.
So, yeah, go ahead, Mary.
So they're well aware of what your concerns are?
Yep.
So should we have the hearing tonight, or should we hold?
No, we can still continue on with the hearing, it just.
Nothing will happen until those.
Nothing will happen, and, and basically in that way Becky can also review the locations of these to make sure they're not in any areas that she's concerned of, so.
Oh, no, that was my concern, because my preference probably would have been to do this after our, we got the okay from you and Becky, but it's, we can make it in our motion, I guess.
Yeah, I think if it's, as long as conditional that they're going to have to work with us and get final approval from the two departments.
And conservation was supportive of that as well.
Yes, yep.
All right, do we have a motion to open a public hearing?
So move.
Second? Do I not need one on this one?
We already opened it.
Oh, I see. Oh, I see, I got you, me. No, then I voted, didn't I close it to vote?
That was the last one.
That was the last one.
Have we already voted to open this one?
No, but when I read that public announcement, apparently, we don't have to open it.
Oh, got you, yeah, we said that already. Okay, gentlemen?
Me, Mike Maszeg, National Grid. So I'll tell you a little bit more about this project. This is the actual, the actual interconnection for Sturbridge Solar Farm LLC. This is, this is the conductor work request, reconductoring work request. So you can imagine a, a big solar farm like that, we, it's, it's time to get off the old system, put in some new equipment. And as we do that, that's, that's when we start to bring everything up to existing standards and specifications. So we can't really just bypass any of that. A lot of this equipment is old, these poles are old, need to be replaced. Looking through the prints, a lot of these poles are due to be replaced pretty much in kind of where, where they're standing at now. I think we're adding nine additional poles. I had a quick peek, and a lot of that is adding midspan poles so we don't have too many, too long of spans. Exact location not to be determined because we, we need to do a dig safe. We need to know what's underground first. Typically, we do stake out locations. This is 5,000 feet, I believe, so picking exact locations for that is, this early, we, we're just, I don't think we're really prepared for right now. But approximate locations of where poles are at now, as well as there is a couple of poles in inaccessible right-of-ways that just make it unsafe for our crews to maintain and work on. So that was a part of the proposal of the nine poles, I think. There's a good amount in there in that right-of-way. But any other questions, reach out, follow up. I have no problem reaching out to the actual design engineer who designed this. So again, I'm here to answer questions.
What, what we are being told to reiterate is that ultimately this will improve service for our town as well because a lot of the existing poles are, the T rails or whatever are not solid, and, and so they tend to go down. So this will shore up actually, the system provides some redundancy for different parts of town, because now it goes down and relies on one portion, as I understand it, so.
Especially during winter time.
So ultimately, there are benefits, but again, the poles aren't fixed in stone at this point because there are, there are a lot of parameters that have to be looked at, so.
Hi, I'm also, my name's Alex, I'm also with National Grid. One thing I'd like to say about this reconducting job is all the pole, this whole reconductor is, they're going to be installing a new type of construction. This type of construction is better equipped for reliability. So basically, if a tree were to fall on your line, there's a, there's a much better chance that you won't lose power. So you're really gaining a lot of reliability from this upgrade. And the reason for the midspan poles is this new, this newer cable is a lot heavier because it's covered, opposed to the bear wire that's on there now. And the heavier cable needs more support, and that's a lot of where the new Z poles are.
Okay, so I think we're in the public hearing portion of it. Go ahead, sir.
Excuse me, are the poles chemically treated? Are the poles chemically treated?
I believe they have some sort of treatment on them, yes.
I think you had concerns about your well, location of your well as well?
Well, that's where my well is, and if it goes into the water.
I, I think if you want, what I would suggest is, is those poles start to get staked, because they haven't staked specifically where the poles are going to go. Maybe if you all.
Well, it looks like it's towards the end of my boundary, left.
Right, but like I said, the, the original drawing, they're actually working on it with another resident on moving it 18 feet. So there's, there's room for some latitude here, so I would suggest maybe that information is exchanged between National Grid and you, and then you can always reach out to me if there's a concern as you move forward on it.
Mary?
May I ask?
You have a question, yeah.
How close is your well to the proposed?
Well, this is stone wall, that's the, my, my well is about, I think, five feet from the stone wall. And the girl from the tree cutting place came down the house, and she says, well, they're going to take this tree down. That was well, well inside my, you know, my land. So I figured that what they were going to do, they're going to put the pole around there, and it's very close to the well, you know.
It's got this.
It's all subject.
224 Podunk Grove.
So we'll, we'll follow up.
Yeah, there's got to be something that.
Yeah, that would be protected.
Legally, they can't get too close, because I would share your concern with if a chemically treated pole.
Environmental DOT approval, dig safe. We don't just stick poles through wells or drain.
But when you first see, you wonder, you know, what's.
Is there a law that governs how close?
Is there a law that covers how close you can be to a property owner's well?
Uh, not to my knowledge yet, right now, but we work within specifications, and so the wells, I'll have to double-check, I can't really confirm that.
And even, too, if they, they have to drill the poles incorrect, they drill a hole, then you punch it in, but that must disrupt the ground a little bit, too, you know, so that would affect if they goes into the, say, the portion where the water comes up.
If I may make a... Go ahead, Mary.
Jamie, this is all going to be subject to conservation review and approval is necessary along with DPW, so it's, it's not a done deal at this moment.
So if you want to express my concerns...
Yeah, no.
So if you can work with Heather back here, and they're friends from National Grid, I think we should be able to cover your concerns. Okay, great, yeah, thanks.
Jamie, so how did you feel?
Oh, Mary, yeah, go ahead.
You said that they can reach out at any time, right? Do you have a cell phone that you will share at the end of the...
I can grab some contact info, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, that's no issue. Again, even if we went out there and put stakes in it, these guys hit stone ledge, they're going to move over a foot, so. Exact pole locations aren't really determined just yet, so it's perfect timing, right?
Great.
That's why we have public hearings.
All right, can we, do you have anything else, Mary?
Nope.
Anything else from the board? All right, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Does anybody else want to be heard on this? No, you all said? Oh, doesn't seem so. All right, do we, do we have a vote? All those in favor? All right.
Are you up?
No, Heather's talking out.
We're his next-door neighbor. How far off the road is this work going to be done? I'm at 222, I have a pole in the corner of my driveway, it's marked, I don't know what the markings actually mean, but is that going to be impacted? I never got a letter regarding this project. She's our next-door neighbor.
Do you know what color the pole is marked as, like, what color paint is on the top?
Um, so you guys are going to have to come up here if you're going to comment on the record? Yeah, so please state your name. In that public hearing, we did, we did technically close it, or...
No, we didn't.
Oh, we didn't? We did, we voted.
Well, we voted, and we can reopen it, we did vote.
I think we have to technically vote to reopen it. Do we have a motion to reopen?
Motion to reopen the public hearing.
Second. All those in favor? All right, state your name and address.
Dennis Spouse, 222 Potunk Road, Sturbridge, Mass.
I hope your son's doing well. So what was your concern?
Well, I'm just curious, I did not receive a letter regarding changing the poles, but I noticed that our street, even past my property, they're all marked with something. Mine has an X on it with an arrow that points down to the ground, I don't know what that means. We're talking about replacing poles.
Gentlemen, can you come in?
Do you know it's going to impact?
So I can actually confirm, I went out in the field today, and all of our proposed poles, it looks like in the past, we had, have like, had stakes in the ground for where they were originally, we planned on doing it. I ran out today, and I rechecked all of our original locations, so there should be a stake in every location in around the same area of where we're planning on putting it. That stake will have a red painted top on it, and it will have, on the side of the road, will be a white arrow pointing towards the stake.
So if mine is not marked, then it's not being impacted?
Yeah, so is it, is it the actual pole that's marked on your driveway?
The pole, the telephone pole, is right next to my driveway, within a foot of the blacktop, and it has a, an X on it, and an arrow that points down to the ground.
So I can tell you that the X and the arrow pointing to the ground, that's going to be our dig save marking, that's going to be, that means that that pole is probably going to be replaced part of this project, and they will...
It is going to be replaced.
Yeah, if there's an X with an arrow, that means they're going to check the dig save, they're going to check the area around it, and they're going to be setting a new pole there.
Okay.
And they'll be setting it, I think they can do, they can move the pole around a little bit, so it's not going to be exactly right there, it'll be like on the left side, the right side, front or back of it, so they might be moving it a little bit.
Okay, but, and it's going to be basically in the same location?
Yeah, it'll be basically in the same location, unless there's a, unless there's a red state on your, on like, along the road that's...
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, I, I think, do we have a motion to close up? Anything else from the public? Okay, do we have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, do we have a motion subject to the contingencies Robin mentioned?
Okay, I'll make a motion that we approve the petition from National Grid for nine JO poles on Putnam Road, beginning at a point approximately 588 feet north of the center line of the intersection of Potunk Road and Bushnell Road, and continuing approximately 4,906 feet in a direction, in a north direction, installation of new P-47-50, P-52-50, P-53, P-63-75, P-66-50, P-67, P-67-50, P-68-50, and P-69-50, starting approximately seven degrees north of existing P-47 Potunk Road. National Grid also requires permission to lay and maintain underground laterals, cables, and wires in the above or intersecting way, and this would be subject to conservation review and approval as necessary, and subject to the DPD, DPW conditions, already sent to National Grid, which for the audience include, any new poles need to be placed in a minimum of 10 feet from any driveway or entrance to any fields. Any new poles need to be placed 10 feet from any drainage structure, drop inlet, or catch basin. Care shall be taken not to install pole through any drainage pipe. Therefore, outlets of pipes shall be determined prior to placement of poles. Any new pipe shall not be installed at the line of the lowest part of the drainage trench, which could cause drainage issues. It would be helpful if they would place a stake in the ground at the proposed locations, so that they need to be adjusted for any of those items above, we would know. Let me know if you want me to call the number on the request, or if you will.
Second?
I'll second that.
A little easier there. Mary?
I just wanted to add, did you make it the overall approval of DPW, or just those bullets? Can you?
I said including.
Okay, all right, nice.
All right, I think that, yeah, I think that clarified, I think you did say, subject to conditions and not approval, so we just...
Both, yeah, conditions and approval.
Conditions and approval, okay. All right, vote, all those in favor? Okay. Okay, so we are moving on to our third public hearing.
Oh.
Mary?
Here we go.
If you would please.
Hold on.
Thank you.
Forest cutting, right. It's like, right here. Okay, public hearing notice. In accordance with Mass General Lodge, Chapter 132, Section 40 to 46, the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Sturbridge will hold a public hearing on the petition of Rory and Jennifer McCarthy for a forest cutting plan for 41 acres of land on 226 Potunk Road, Sturbridge, owned by Rory and Jennifer McCarthy. The hearing will be held on Monday, May 15, 2023, at 6:40 PM, Sturbridge Town Hall, Veterans Memorial Hall, second floor, Main Street, Sturbridge.
Okay. So I think we're, so are the petitioners here, present?
We should run everybody asking.
Okay, go ahead, put in, identify yourself, please.
Yeah, I'm John Clark, licensed forester.
Okay, and can you please tell us about the project?
Oh, it's a forest cutting plan, that's part of the management of their property.
Okay. So how extensive is the plan? Can you just elaborate a bit?
How what?
I said, just, can you just walk us through the project a bit more?
Um, yeah, it's, it's just a forestry project, so the plan was submitted to the state, and it's been approved for several months, and it includes harvesting on 41 acres, there's a stream crossing, two stream crossings, they've all been approved by the state. There were a number of items that were requested by the Town of Sturbridge, they've all been delivered, so there's a road bond in place, all the abutters have been notified by the town, and insurance certificates were sent. There was another item.
Okay.
But that's not typical, this, this is a, the bylaws specific to Sturbridge, not the state.
Comments from the board?
Did the green cards come back?
I believe so, I think all the...
The majority of the green cards?
Yeah, Michelle didn't indicate that there was any problem with this.
She usually...
Anything else?
We, we usually also make it contingent upon coordinating with the school buses. We have a list of conditions that we typically apply. I don't know, oh, you've got them in front of you, yes, school bus route, so it doesn't conflict, time requirements, I think daylight hours, Mary would have all of them. We try to be consistent with one forest plant to another.
It's on the, it's actually on the letter that gets drafted for me.
So that's already been given to him, then?
It hasn't been delivered to me yet, but I'm sure it will.
It's in the letter that he'll receive from me.
Oh, from you.
A board approved it.
But you haven't gotten it.
That I have to sign after your vote, to say that its contingents are now, isn't day, school bus operations, things like that.
Okay. Anything else? Trace, Trace?
Just have a member of the public with their hand up back there.
All right. Please identify yourself, and your address.
I am an abutter of that property. I live at 223 Potunk Road. What is their plan for cutting down 41 acres lot? Is there a plan in place for what they want to put there?
Nothing's being put there, this is just forestry. So this isn't a plan to put solar houses, this is forestry?
I mean, someone just moves into our area, I've lived there 36 years, nothing was ever presented like this, our area was nice and quiet, it doesn't make sense for someone to want to cut down 41 acres behind their home, and where the abutters and people on that side of their street also live there. He has to have a plan of what he wants to put there.
I think that your suspicion that something bigger is going on in forestry is pretty typical, so when people cut trees down, people often think that there's something bigger at play, this is forestry, so that land has not been managed in the past, so now the land is under a conservation program, it's in Chapter 61, it's got a bird management plan that's supported by Mass Audubon and DCR and the Forest Stewardship Program, and the cutting is part of that, so this is cutting...
So what about the animals that live back there?
The cutting is actually intended to help habitat.
I, I think, can we just clarify?
Yeah.
It's not a clearing.
This is not...
This is a selective cut, right? You're going to go in...
Maybe if you could explain that it's, it's not a clear, I think you're, you're envisioning a clearing.
I'm thinking, right, that's what I'm thinking, it is.
No, it's cleaning, if you will, forestry cleaning.
Clearcutting is part of forestry also, so a portion of this is going to be clearcut. The whole thing is not going to be clearcut, and that's all spelled out inside a forest cutting plan that's approved by the Department of Conservation and Recreation.
So...
And if you want to get into some of the bigger details about habitat, I mean, we could spend a lot of time on that, but there's a reason for doing all this work.
So one person moves into our area, like I said, the houses were built in 80, 84, the houses all in our area. I purchased ours in 88, nothing. My next-door neighbor that used to live next to me, he sold his house recently, and he cut down his property, and I don't even think that they even got permission to cut down. I do have area in my land that I would like to clear out a little bit in there. Do I have to get a permit to do this?
Is it for forestry? So if, this is a forestry plan, so...
But who brought up the forestry?
According to forestry rules, if you're doing something for forestry, it means the land is staying open, that's why I'm here. So if this were going to be converted to lawn, or a house, or a road, I wouldn't be sitting here, it wouldn't be forestry.
It would be a whole...
It would be a conversion, so...
Chapter, chapter land is actually protected land. When somebody puts their land into chapter land, they actually get tax breaks to do that, but that means they can't develop it, and it's almost a lien on the property, for lack of a better word, and if they were to ever do something, they would actually owe that back. So it's a way of protecting the land. Forestry isn't the same as just taking down trees, it's cleaning selectively to allow habitats in certain conservations. In fact, sometimes it should happen. If you have a farmland, you would want to clear out certain areas and leave other areas treed, if you will. So I, I think that there's sometimes a misinterpretation, just clearing trees off your lot, you'd have to deal with conservation if you're in a wetlands, there would be a whole host of municipal things that would take place, but chapter land, Chapter 61, and forestry land, is very protected. It's actually a greater protection than what you might have from your neighbors who don't have land in chapter, where they have a lot more latitude to sort of do what they want. Does that, did I capture that right?
Yeah.
I'm, I'm, it's, it's, we hear the word forestry, and you think they're just cutting, they're just going to clear. It's actually to protect.
But also, it's the state that gives the permit.
Yes.
It's not the Board of Selectmen. We can put conditions within reason, which we usually do.
Okay, so he's gotten his permit from the state, that's where he files his forestry plan?
Okay, so it was the owner, Rory, that lives in the house, is the one that asked for a permit to have them...
Correct, the owner of that land.
Okay, so he owes, he owns, according to our records, when we got them, he doesn't have that much land behind his house. I live across the road from him diagonally, and I own 3.1 or 3.2 acres of land. My land goes from the beginning of street, Potunk Road, to the Potunk Pike, there's a fence right at the end of the lot, so I, I run all the way down there. And I already, it wasn't that I got an ignorant with someone, but they were putting up electric dog fences up, they came on my property, and so I called an engineer, and we're going to have a, another survey, exactly where those flags were put up in the underground lines for their electric fence, because when I talked to the owner, she was really nice, and I was nice to her, but I said, your, your line is coming on my property. Well, how do you know that? I said, because I went to the town, and I've got my land plot where I live, and so she said, oh, okay, we'll move them. So we moved the flags, but then when the people came in to do the electric fences, lo and behold, I went, I walked back behind my property, and the wire underneath the ground is showing up with the flags right up on my property. So now that's why I'm having them come and do a survey, the engineer come and do a survey, because I want poles showing where my property goes from where my land is, from the beginning all the way to the road.
I can see where that's a problem, but the question here tonight is the...
And I understand that, but I couldn't understand why he wanted 41 acres, it was under his name when we got the...
Yeah, but he doesn't want a clearcut, even, even if he did, which he doesn't, because it's protected, property owners have rights, they can do with what's allowed by laws by laws with their property. I know you brought up, what about the future? That always comes up at these hearings, you know, oh, are you going to put in houses and stuff? That's not for us to determine, they're basically asking for not a clearcut, just a thinning.
Okay, and typically, if somebody's land is in chapter land, it's an indication that they don't plan on developing it. That's usually an indication that they don't.
Because the town is the writer.
So how do you know if your property's on, how do you know that it's chapter land?
That's who issues the permit, is the state, this is a state, they call it chapter, it's a state law.
It's a state law, so the chapter references the state.
You have to get a per, yeah, you have to get permission to, right, and protected, it doesn't just, you don't just declare, I want...
They actually have a plan, they have to map it out.
Yeah.
It's actually...
It's actually a large process.
And so, you take fewer taxes. The town has a right of first refusal. There are actually additional protections.
Right. If you tried to sell off a portion of that, the town would actually have a right of first refusal. And then, they would have to wait. And it would have to be over a year of buying it out of chapter land. It's actually a complicated process if somebody wanted to develop that.
Okay.
And it would be very public.
But they also have to pay the back tax.
Right. They would have to pay all the back taxes. It's a lien effectively.
And you'll get notice of it too, because they would have to go to town meeting if the town were to elect it or it'll be at the board of selectmen. So, there's additional process. You can't guarantee everything's fine in the future, obviously. But I think relative to this, this is...
Someone could buy it, wait a year, try to pull it out. The town would have a right of first refusal. But that would be a large process. But for what you have in front of you right now, this is someone on the surface that is basically trying to properly clear, encourage proper vegetation, prevent... A lot of that has to do with preventing fire. Sometimes if there's, you know, stuff that's brush. Brush and it's... A lot of it's clearing and cleaning.
Okay. Well, thank you for...
You can always reach out if you have more questions to me. I'll follow up.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. Have a good night.
Anyone else from the public? Yeah, come, Mr. Russ.
Heather, got to repeat my name and everything? Oh.
Just to make sure, make sure you know it.
Potunk Road, Sturbridge, Mass.
Just the test us, right?
First question is, exactly where is this property located? I live two properties further up Potunk Road. And is it going to be...
When you say up, do you mean north?
Don't ask people that question.
Oh, you probably aren't even in a butter.
I'm at 222.
So, I think...
So, it's going the other direction?
Because the town generates in a butter's list. So, you probably don't even touch the property.
I must because I received the letter.
Yeah, but I think it goes be... Like, people on the other side of the road were also notified, so I don't know where you live.
Okay.
And I know the house has a number, but I know the property. I don't know the house number.
And then, my second question is, how big of a crew is gonna be working there? How much noise and how much disruption to our neighborhood will there be?
A crew of probably six.
Six people?
Six people.
Oh. Doesn't sound like much.
Six people. I mean, it's big machinery.
Yeah.
Machinery is loud.
You'll be working right off of Potunk Road?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, right off of Potunk Road. And we'll be right behind the landowner's house. So, we've got five children, so they'll have to suffer through it too. The traffic will go right from Potunk to Route 49. We've got a road bond in place.
The restriction would restrict it from 7:00 AM to dusk, so they couldn't do it before 7:00 AM or after dusk. And Saturdays from 8:00 to 12:00 noon, no Sundays or holidays. So, that's part of the restriction.
All right. So, the noise level should be reasonable. I'm far enough away to...
I think people have all sorts of reactions, honestly. And the public generally doesn't, you know, love forestry.
We've had a lot of construction on our road recently, including his, Mr. McCroy.
McCarthy.
Yeah, so we've been going through a lot of construction lately and just more. But it's starting to get a little annoying.
Anybody that wants to see a copy of the guidelines that we impose, we can make copies of. But again, as Selectman Blanchard, select person Blanchard said, we're not the permit authority. We don't have jurisdiction over foresting permits. That's the state. We can impose reasonable conditions. But we're not the authority to say you can or can't get the forestry cutting plan.
No, I understand that.
But what we try to do, and maybe some towns don't even have these, I think.
They don't. Why we do it is so that residents...
I think Sturbridge is alone.
Like, residents can come forward, express their concerns. And we've done what we can to try to balance the rights of the property owner with the people who live in the neighborhood. So, we say, "No holidays, no Sundays." You've gotta, you know, have good communication with the buses. But they have a right to do it. So, we've done what we can to make it a little bit more acceptable to people in the neighborhood in terms of the level of disruption and noise. So, and if you find that... And I'm not saying this will happen. But if you find that any of our guidelines are not being honored, you know, you hear clearing being done on a Sunday or on a holiday, then contact our town administrator.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great seeing you. All right. Anybody else from the public? Yeah, come on up.
Hi. My name's Diane Ziegler. I'm the southern abutter to the property being cut. And I had some questions about the plotting and the plan.
Can you just give us your address?
It's 206 Potunk Road.
Thanks.
Are they cutting any trails? The trails seem to be marked on the map. Are they cutting open trails so that they can navigate this property as well?
Yes.
Are any of the trails coming out on our... Two... It looks like on the map that you have three trails coming directly onto our property stonewall.
Onto your property?
Directly to... So, it looks like the trails are going straight south to the stonewall that separates our property and their property. 206 Potunk Road.
Like...
The big field, the field that has the horses in it, next to the property.
Okay.
Okay. My concern is I don't want trails emptying out onto the field. Okay.
And we like to take a trail right to your stonewall?
Yeah. Okay.
No, because they're...
That's what's drawn on the map, so I'm just asking.
Yeah. No?
Okay. Because there's three lines go in the map. It's very hard to tell if it's swampland, delineation, or if it's a trail that's... It looks like a trail that's going straight into the stonewall that divides our property from his. And that wall is used for fencing. And there are horses on the other side, which would be a liability on my part if people are walking across and getting into that field.
There was no intention to connect your field to a trail on the McCarthy property.
Okay. And is there a boundary between the amount of woods that you're... I know you're trimming and thinning the woods and a percentage of the trees. Is there a boundary to how close to that property line you're going to be cutting?
No.
Okay. Because my concern is some of the trees will be falling over the stonewall and spooking horses. Because we've got five or six young horses in that field right next to where you're cutting.
Yeah. So, your... If I am thinking of the property, your field goes sort of all the way out toward McCarthy's and then it cuts back in and then down the hill where the horses are?
Yeah. We don't own the upper field that's hay.
So, we're not even gonna be down by you?
Okay.
So, the cutting limit stops at that upper field.
Okay. So, they're only gonna...
We're not even gonna be down at your wall.
Okay. Because we're abutted the wall. We're exactly that line going west. Yeah, that map is... So, my concern was is we are this stonewall right here.
Okay. So, the cutting line is this?
Yep.
And then, it goes over here. So, there's no cutting in here.
Okay. But if you're cutting along here... The one other thing on this map that was hard to tell is...
That's not yours though, right? That's...
Well, ours comes up the hill. I just don't... There's no footage here, so I don't know how far you're coming up.
Yeah, that's not yours. So, this is that long run and this is all fallow field. There's not field right there. It's like the brushy edge.
Okay. So, you're doing, "That's the brushy edge."
What was that, Moynihan or something like that?
Okay. So, is this the piece of the big grass field? This would be the...
No, no, no. The field stops like here. And this is all woods. This property is 41 acres that we're gonna cut?
Yeah.
It's a 200 acre property.
Yeah. I've got 11 acres of boarding.
It's very large, so that...
I believe this is the 11 acre cut here. And this is where it goes to the grass field. This is the end of the stonewall here. So, I abut to this whole piece here.
Yeah.
And we have horses directly on this other side of the wall.
There's no legal consideration for distance from boundary.
Okay.
But we're not cutting to your boundary.
Yep. That's all I wanted to clarify. And when is the cutting gonna start?
So, can we... Yeah, appreciate the back and forth. Generally, you're supposed to be directing questions to us. I do understand it's confusing.
Yep, sorry.
Like, there's no other way around it. I understand.
Right.
But so, your concerns were that they were abutting your... It was gonna cut to your property and spook your horses? Is that the basic...
Yeah. My concern is that something will fall onto the other side, take the fence down, horses get out, you know?
That would be like a legal issue anyway. Like, if we dropped a tree onto your property and hurt a horse or something like that, that's not gonna...
So, the representation is, is that the cutting is not going to her property? And as a consequence, the tree should not...
I would have to see her property boundary mapped so that I could guarantee that, because I don't know exactly.
Yeah, it's very hard to tell in here.
We're not gonna be up against your property.
So, but based upon your understanding here tonight of where her property is, you do not understand that you will be cutting anywhere near it to the point where you could cut it?
No. And I can guarantee you, nothing would be falling over the property line onto your fence, onto a horse or anything like that.
Is that helpful?
That is helpful to know where the cutting line is gonna be. It's very hard to determine that. The second thing is, when is the cutting gonna start? Because I actually have to probably keep the horses...
Yeah, you can't turn them out.
Because the noise of the trees falling is very spooky.
Not gonna be able to turn them out.
They could run through the fence. So, I'm gonna end up having to keep them restricted to a different area so they're not quite so able to run loose or get spooked.
Could I suggest that you exchange information?
Yeah, yeah, that probably...
Because I would've said I have a question, so it's a problem you couldn't turn them out.
Yeah. A tree falls, sometimes they will run and spook.
You know, I don't, you know, I don't notify everyone when we start to work. I just can't do that.
I just need to know approximately what day you're going to start to work.
I don't. This hearing has been put back three different times. And this is all weather related, because we've got to be there when the conditions are good. I can't even tell you that it's gonna happen this summer. It could be next winter. And the permit's for two years. So, I don't know. And I'm sure the landowner would like to know when we're gonna be there. I can't even give them the answer yet.
Well, with that, I think that please exchange information with her and figure out a way to notify her of when the cutting will be happening so she can restrain her horses.
She is in a bit of a unique circumstance. This isn't just a matter of noise. You've got to plan a little bit.
Plan a little bit. I just need to know that I'm not gonna... I just... I've had them spooked because of other things and...
It's in your best interest too.
Yeah.
You don't want to...
We just wanna know ahead of time so we know to keep them in the front field.
You don't need to pass the stone wall.
So, okay. So, okay. Is that anything else or is it...
Nope, that's all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else from the public? Anybody else? All right.
Okay. Motion to close, public key, second.
All those in favor? Great. All right. All right. Those in favor of approving the plan? Or do I have a motion, I should say?
I'll make a motion to approve the forest cutting plan for Rory and Jennifer McCarthy. 41 acres of land, 226 Potunk Road, Sturbridge, Mass.
With our condition?
With our condition, with our forest cutting plan guidelines.
Second.
All right. Those in favor? Thank you.
So, you'll get a letter from me with the conditions? Or they will? You or I will?
All right. To town administrator update?
I have nothing to add tonight. There's plenty here already.
All right.
Thank you.
All right. We have the department report, chief. Folks, if you can take it in the hallway, appreciate it.
Good evening, chief.
Good evening. How's everybody doing? Very well. I have some nice warm weather.
I'm not gonna...
But my wife is the same way. She's got sweatshirts on and anyways. So, you have in front of you our reports for March and April. I will make note of a couple of things. We are, although out of quote unquote brush season, very dry. Reports are that tomorrow and Wednesday are going to be fairly close, if not actual red flag, weather days for fire danger. So, I would caution the public to be extra careful with smoking materials and anything else that could light brush.
Can we make sure that gets on social media for people?
Absolutely.
Yeah, thank you, chief.
Absolutely. Our call volume is trending higher than it did last year at this time. The month of March, we were approximately 80 calls more than the same time last year. February, I think we were less than 10 calls more than last year. But in any event, we are trending higher than last year. I can't say for sure what that's from other than more people are out and about and more people are requesting service for, generally for EMS-related calls. So, any questions on my reports?
Board?
I would like to say that Deputy Chief Martel and I today had the pleasure of attending the Anna Maria College commencement exercises at the DCU Center in Worcester, where Lieutenant Jennifer Ash and Lieutenant Sean Moynah graduated both with their bachelor of science degree in fire science. So, I commend them for their hard work. And it is a true testament to the dedication and service that they provide to the town of Sturbridge.
Okay, we should send a letter.
Kudos out to both of them for their hard work.
I was at St. V's when they let out. I was like, "Who's graduating?" I wish I had known.
I won't steal his thunder, but Sergeant Sean Payne also graduated with his master's degree in public administration today. So, congratulations as well.
Let us PD and fire. It was a good day for the town.
Yeah. Oh, yeah.
Well, that's great. Do you have anything else for us, sir?
The only other thing I have is the appointment.
Okay.
Jump to that?
Yeah, we can jump to it. Jeff, wanna come up?
Gonna be... Beep. Yep.
Appointment letters.
So, it's my pleasure to present to you Jeff White tonight. Jeff comes to us with 18 years of fire service experience with Brookfield Fire Department, where he currently serves as a lieutenant. He's certified firefighter one and two. Graduate of the District 7 Recruit Firefighter Program. He's a certified fire service instructor one, fire officer one and two, and a credentialed fire prevention officer basic. He's a fire and life safety educator and a member of the District 7 Technical Rescue Team. Jeff has a bachelor of science degree in mechanical engineering and a master of science in fire protection engineering, both from Worcester Polytechnic Institute. He is a self-employed and registered mechanical and fire protection engineer with 20 years of experience in system design and plan review. And he recently became a Massachusetts certified EMT and is looking to gain additional experience in emergency medical services, in emergency medical services, which we will definitely provide him. He lives in Brookfield with his wife Mary Ann and two young daughters, and I respectfully request that his appointment be approved tonight. Upon his appointment, his rate of pay will be consistent with the provisions of Article Seven of the agreement between the town of Sturbridge and Teamsters Local 170 and will be effective tomorrow, May 16th, 2023, upon approval.
All right, any questions from the board?
Just want to make a note that I happened to run into the chief from Brookfield today, and he came, highly recommended, and said that you would be very lucky to have him on your department.
Yeah, and I'll add to that, that many of the firefighters from Sturbridge are familiar with Jeff and his work, and we've trained together numerous times. So he's a very welcomed addition to our staff.
Hey, dear. All right, do we have a motion?
Okay, I'll make a motion that the board appoint Jeff White as part-time firefighter slash EMT with the Sturbridge Fire Department, with his rate of pay being consistent with provisions of Article Seven of the agreement between the town of Sturbridge and Teamsters Local Number 170, effective May 16th, 2023.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Welcome aboard, Phil.
Congratulations, welcome aboard.
Thanks.
Congratulations. Great to have you. God bless.
Thank you, congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thanks for not mentioning it. Water sprinkler.
At the department meeting.
Oh, sure.
All right. So I think we're back to action item A here. Consideration and possible action of the appointment of Kyle Saint Marie.
Heather appointment?
Hello again, Heather.
Good evening. So it is, I'm very fortunate to present to you Kyle Saint Marie. He cannot be here tonight. He does have a young family, so, and he is still currently working his current job. So contingent on your appointment, he would give us two weeks' notice tomorrow and be planning to start on May 30th. I think you know that I've been conducting a pretty exhausting search. I've conducted multiple interviews for this position, had actually studded some informal offers and been turned down based on where we've stood in our rate of pay. He is starting at a step four, but as our contract, as you're aware, we're eliminating the bottom two steps next July 1st, so he'll go back to a step two. So he will still have plenty of space to proceed. He is coming to us with over 10 years of experience with DPWs, which is actually very hard to find, so he is very aware of what we do on a day-to-day basis, which is very helpful, has experience in plowing snow, applying salt, has experience with our heavy equipment and licensure, so, which we were very fortunate to find. So he'll be able to step right in and start working with our crew very quickly.
And this sort of illustrates why what happened with the contract did, that starting next year, we had to shift everything because that's the rate we really need to have at the bottom to bring in.
And what is the effective date again?
He would be effective May 30th.
May 30th, okay. Okay, do we have any questions for Heather?
Nope.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Kyle Saint Marie to the Sturbridge DPW at the hourly rate of $28.55 per hour, active May 30th.
Do we need to, and with the step increasing on July 1st to 29.05, right? Is that necessary to say?
It's not, because that would be where he'd be going anyways. Yes.
Okay. All right, all those in favor? All right.
Thank you.
All right, I think the next few are yours, Robin.
Yep, so these are the appointments of two members to the planning board, Mr. David Barbeau and Mr. Tyler Stedman. Is Mr. Barbeau here? Yeah, we, so, Mr. Barbeau actually had applied the last time we had an opening and interviewed with Jean and myself, and we were interviewing at that point for any number of different positions. And we, both Jean and I were really very impressed with Mr. Barbeau's just clear insight. He does not have a background in planning, but a great sense of balance in the community and understands the challenges that the community faces. And Jean and I both felt that if another opening popped up, that we very much wanted Mr. Barbeau to join. And so we are very pleased to present him tonight for appointment. We think he'll be a great contributor to planning.
Great. Any questions from the board?
No, maybe him.
Oh, is he?
Yes, if you want to come up, you could come up and say hello to the board.
It's quite an endorsement, right?
Yeah.
We didn't forget about you. You were in the back of our head right along.
David Borbo, 39 Farquhar Road.
Yeah, I know those Farquhar Road people.
That's the people from Farquhar Road that are trouble, yeah? You and your neighbors.
Almost as much traffic.
All right, any questions?
I'll just thank you for your interest and volunteering your time.
If you approve me, I appreciate the opportunity to serve on the board.
That's good. New blood.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of David Borbo to the planning board, effective July 19th, 2023, for a term to expire June 19th, 2026.
Second.
Second.
Thank you. All those in favor? Welcome aboard.
Welcome.
Welcome, congratulations.
Thank you. See you again. Thank you.
Don't forget to get sworn in.
You don't forget to get C-Lin. There you go.
Congratulations. Because...
You're welcome.
They meet.
And our next, our next appointment, Mr. Stedman had sent in a resume, an application for a position on the board. Jean and I reviewed the resume. We have not, because we wanted to get these positions moving. This is not a board, obviously, that can stay unstaffed. We did not have a chance to formally interview Mr. Stedman, but we were both amazingly impressed with his resume. Tremendous military background, thank you for your service, sir. And we certainly hope for the board's consideration. Broad background in aircraft training, flight, was it?
I'm a military pilot.
Yeah, military pilot, so... Whatever he did up there, he did. And he's braver than I am. So we were really pleased with that background, strong military background, and a strong commitment to community came through in his resume, and that really impressed us.
Any questions for Mr. Stedman?
No, just thank you for volunteering.
Do you have anything to say?
No, just thank you for having me, and I apologize that I couldn't be any sooner, but I just got back with ZBA with conservation for a project of my own, and I was just incredibly impressed by how everything went, and that really was spiked my interest in the first place, so happy to fill the vacancy.
Very good. Usually we hear complaints, it's great to hear.
It's a nice conversation. Life is harder to show back.
I put her in, I guess.
Nice, love it. If he can handle flying a military aircraft, then I think he can handle us.
Oh, yeah. All right, well, do we have any, do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion to confirm the appointment of Taylor Stedman to the planning board, effective June 19th, 2023, for a term to expire June 19th, 2026.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Congratulations. Thank you, sir, congratulations.
Thank you for coming aboard.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
All right.
All right.
Hocker and peddler license for Simone Parsky renewal by...
Nope, I think these are just pretty straightforward.
Yeah, he was here earlier, but we've done these.
Okay.
He's been here, so I personally don't see any problem.
Yeah, I couldn't tell. All right. Anybody on the board have any comment or questions?
Hey, I'll make a motion then to approve a Hocker and Peddler license for Simeon Paresky slash renewal by Anderson.
Do we have a second?
I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor? Guys have it.
Thank you.
So then we are on to the town meeting warrant?
Those are both withdrawn, F and G. Those were placeholders in the event that we needed to reopen.
Perfect. All right, on to item H regarding Republic Services. Robin?
Yep, you have a memo from Robin on this from Facilities. I don't really have much more to add than what she has in her memorandum on this.
Any questions from the board?
It was a bid, obviously went through a bid process, so.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Any questions from the board?
I'll make a motion to authorize the chair to sign an agreement with Republic Services, Inc., for three-year terms starting July 1st, 2023.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Second. All those in favor? All right, the guys have it. Moving to consideration and possible action on ARPA funds?
So I left a memo on your desk. This one gets signed by everybody. That one just you. And ARPA voted on a couple of items. Some were pretty straightforward. The vandalism repair at the recreation center has been waiting until cameras went in before we prepared the damage. ARPA did vote to support $3,500 for that. $10,500, a traffic study on Arnold Road and Route 20. We had a discussion on this. I was approached by people who attend the senior center who had concerns. I explained to them it's a state road, we can't arbitrarily do this. We've also had a lot of people talk generally about Arnold, and we have had complaints from the neighbors on Cedar for people who cut through. So we're asking to use $10,500 of ARPA money, which ARPA did support, to get a traffic study of that particular location done. We did discuss the fact that there are other locations on 20 that are bad or worse, but this one is where our senior center is. We did have a specific request from members of the public for this one.
On that one, though, Robin, Central Mass has done traffic studies for us, and they had just requested, request from us a while ago. Did we put that down?
I don't know. I know this had been reviewed back in 2014, this particular intersection.
Right, because that's...
Did it not need a traffic warrant at that time?
No, no, and before that, the state had said the town's got to do something before they do it. That's why that third lane is there.
But I have not heard anything more from Central Mass. The $3,200 for DPW environmental, that's a project overrun. We have an $18,000 contract tonight. We had $18,200 we had put aside, ARPA had supported, and the board supported $15,000. It came in at $18,200. So we went back and asked ARPA for $3,200. There was an overrun for the HVAC project of the library of $90,000. So as you know, these projects for HVAC are all coming in outrageous right now. The challenge we face is that $75,000 is going to come back to us in rebates from National Grid. But the problem is that the rebates have to go to the general fund, it can't go back to ARPA. So ARPA voted to cover the other $15,000 straight out and then ask FinCom to do a transfer of $75,000, knowing that the money would come back. The problem we're running into is it's going to be two separate budget years. There's only $53,000 less available in that emergency transfer fund. I did not put it in front of FinCom, though I said I was going to bring it to FinCom, but we brought it to Barbara first, and it's only $53,000. So they would not have been enough to cover it, and Barbara was concerned about depleting that anymore, given that we still have about seven weeks left in the year if something overruns on a budget line. So we did not take it to FinCom. The contingency that ARPA had was that it would be contingent on FinCom approval, but I really couldn't put it in front of FinCom because there wasn't enough money there. The board can choose to vote either way on that with ARPA, blessing or not. The only reason I would suggest that we should is that we're going to have a timing issue on the bids, because we're going to have to approve, we're going to have to sign those contracts. So, so ARPA was, this is disappointment, I'll just say, as an individual member, because ARPA did not, if it comes from ARPA funds, $75,000, we will get reimbursed that money, but it's not going to go back to ARPA, it's going to go to the general fund. So ARPA's financing something with their money, and they're not getting it back, it's going to be refunded. So I really, you know, I don't know why something like this can't come from free cash. We don't have it. It's, we only have the emergency transfer money. It could go onto a warrant article for next year, but we don't have time. There's not enough money to transfer. We can't use any of the $53,000? Use all of the $53,000, but then if something else runs over this year, we won't have any money. Right, but I mean, at least, because, I mean, why should ARPA have to come up with the full $75,000? They're not going to get any of that back. We, it's a rebate, we will get this money back. So I don't... I mean, we can vote not to do it and rebid the contract at this point. $53,000, we don't have to use it all, but it would have been nice to at least have gone to FinCom with a request for $25,000, so that ARPA is down $50,000. You know what I'm saying? Because it's money that is promised us back. If it could go back to ARPA, that would be a no-brainer, but... It means a delay on the contract, we're just going to have to rebid it, and that's fine. We can rebid it. I don't want it to come back higher, but... It's a frustrating thing that the money has to go to the general fund, and that's what's frustrating about this.
What's the likelihood that if we rebid it, it will cost us substantially more money?
Well, what makes this one a little complicated is when the bids came in, they were identical, and we told them that there was no low bidder and that they were both too high anyway. So we asked them to come back and sharpen their pencils. They did, one dropped significantly. That put that one as eligible, but it was still $90,000 over what we had budgeted. The problem is if we go out and put it out to bid again, they could go up, knowing that... Yeah, I don't want to do that, but I just wonder why Barbara wasn't willing to use some of the $53,000. She was concerned about using it and didn't feel that that was, I mean, I asked her, she said, we only, Robin asked her, she said, we have $53,000, and she really didn't want to deplete that account. Maybe I should have pushed forward to buy $25,000 on. What else is going to come through between now and... If one line item runs over, you know, like we transferred money the other day for the fire truck that, FinCom transferred money for the fire truck that blew an engine. If we have something like that happen, you know, $53,000 is not a lot of money. So I understood where she was coming from, it doesn't give us a lot of latitude. If this was earlier in the year, I think we probably could have done more. And the problem is the rebates come next year. Again, if it had been earlier in the fiscal year, it would have been much easier. I'm a little frustrated, just because I can't get that money back. It's just a big disappointment that ARPA money is... And I'm trying to figure if there's a way to make something contingent and say to FinCom, look, you're going to get those rebates. Can we plan on buying something for ARPA? You know, I don't know if there's a way to make it work legally.
Well, it's a little too much of a quid pro quo. If ARPA has specific funding, it's too clever by half for my taste.
Yeah, you don't want to get caught.
Yeah.
Department of Revenue is not pleased with those types of things.
So...
You could parse these out, by the way. I just put them on one memo.
That's what I was going to say, because I kind of, it kind of all...
Yeah, you could separate these all. I don't want it to go out to bid and then have it come back, you know, $150,000. $50,000 more. And I apologize, I should have put it forward to come up with a number, but then I don't know what number ARPA would have wanted me to put in front of FinCom at that point, because I couldn't put 75, and I certainly couldn't put 53. No, but maybe like 25, you know, like some of it.
Yeah, but, so can we just run through the particular line items again?
Yep, so one...
And if anybody has one that they want to hold out to discuss for a separate from it, maybe we do a motion with all of them, and then if there's something else?
So $3,500 vandalism repair, $10,500 for traffic study, $32,000 for DPW environmental, and then $15,000 HVAC overrun, $75,000 with the asterisks for HVAC overrun.
Okay.
So the first three, you might motion as a block.
Well, it depends what everybody has to say. Does anybody want, I know we've talked about this last item, is there any, but for the first, let's say, four, excuse me, three, is there any other comments?
Nope.
Okay, and then on these last two, are we comfortable putting it forward despite Mary's pretty cogent frustrations?
Kind of want to hold your nose on it, I know.
But I think we're going to, I'd rather take this on the chin than hit a contract. The bid go way up, that's, I don't know, better than definitely no. I don't know, Mary, does that...
Oh, no, I mean, I don't, yeah, we don't have a choice at this point. It just would have been nice if FinCom came up with some of, some of that... I apologize, I should have put some in front of them, but arbitrarily to pick a number on ARPA's behalf, yeah. From now until the new fiscal year starts, July 1, right? I wish we could have stretched the contract. And we're already May, we're not going to probably use the full 53 from now until July 1.
Amy?
Lynn's?
But Robin, you might want to correct, that's $3,200 for the DPW.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Not $32,000.
Thirty, $3,200, yes. The memo says it, but my... It's written correctly. $32,000.
All right, now that peanut gallery back there is...
Thank you. Thank you, peanut gallery.
So, all right, so with that, do we have a motion?
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the recommendations of the ARPA committee as presented.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
And can I just give an update on ARPA 2?
Yes.
Because I know it's been one of our goals, and it seemed like the committee was very supportive of coming up with some betterment, some beautification monies for those triangles and everything. Robin indicated she doesn't know if the, and NAS Department Transportation is going to agree with that, but I guess I'm going to request that we have asked you, Robin, to find out if we can at least put the "Welcome to Sturbridge" sign there. I know Betterment's coming up with $35,000. I know you had suggested by where the state garage is, but honestly, that's where we had the other "Welcome to Sturbridge" sign, and it's really not coming off the highways. That's like by 131.
Yeah.
Right.
And it would be just good to know one way or another.
I was thinking of the state police barracks. Yeah, okay, so that's what you don't want, okay.
Essentially where it was before. I don't want it there, I don't know.
No, I agree.
So you want the circle at 131, and they, you know, they're going to come back with, well, you know, we're going to get rid of that intersection, blah, 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 blah. We don't care.
The sign should be probably...
Yes, okay.
Probably would be able to physically move the sign.
Yeah, I'll request something from DOT, but between ARPA and Betterment, if it goes through a town meeting, we will have a significant, I think we're at about $70,000.
At least a nice sign when you come off 84 in the park.
Flowers and plantings and...
Something.
Yep.
All right, so with that, on to I, the consideration and possible action on the Joshua Hyde Library HVAC project.
So that's the bid that came in $90,000 over.
That's, then we have K. The chair, the contract with the nursery school fire alarm project? The chair, the contract with the nursery school fire alarm project.
Yep, Robin should have a memo on that.
Okay.
Hey, we have to vote.
What's it?
Have to vote for you to.
Oh, an I, sorry, I moved too quickly. So I'm back to I, do we have a, a motion?
Motion to authorize chair to execute a contract for the Joshua Hyde Library HVAC slash accessibility improvement project with W.J. Montford for one million, one hundred seventy-six thousand.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? All right, now we're on to K. All right, consideration and possible action to authorize a chair to execute a contract for the nursery school fire alarm project.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Oh, all in favor? The ayes have it. L, consideration and possible action to authorize a chair to execute a contract on one fifty-four Breakneck Road with Van Zylm Engineers.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, no, no, you're good, that's not J.
It's L.
It's L.
This is L, but I don't have J. That's not J.
Okay, so.
I'll make a motion that we authorize the chair to execute a contract for Van Zylm Engineers for the fire alarm engineering at one fifty-four Breakneck Road for seven thousand five hundred, plus up to one thousand for reimbursable, for reimbursement.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? The ayes have it. Okay.
So.
We're up to M.
M and N, you all voted to put the warrant article in with the percentage increases that we talked about last week. What we did not vote was to actually set the rate. So you had to vote to set the rate so that then that could, the budget could then go forward. I had a question from Mary today to act the actual numbers, the current water rate is seven eighteen, with an eight point seven, the new one will be seven dollars and eighty-one cents. The sewer rate is twelve fifteen, the new rate with three point six will be twelve dollars and fifty-nine cents for an increase of forty-four cents. So water is increasing sixty-three cents, and sewer is increasing forty-four cents, and no fund balance was used, as we discussed at the.
Um, normally we do, is there any reason we didn't?
The reserve funds are not strong, there's not much in the reserve funds in the water sewer. In fact, they're low and we really need to rebuild them.
Yeah, so the FinCom, you have some fun conversation on it.
Yeah, there's just, there's not, it's, it's a concern how low the water sewer reserves are, particularly sewer.
Okay, so, okay, very good.
Um, and also, I did have that question on ending.
Yes, so the bill goes out June thirtieth for quarter ending June thirtieth, but the money comes in on, in July of twenty-four, so it's actually applied to the bill that goes out on June thirtieth.
So.
Right, that's, that's what always confuses me. So shouldn't these rates be for twenty twenty-four?
The twenty-four rates, because it gets voted with the twenty-four budget, but you're setting them for a bill that goes out June thirtieth.
Because of the time of collection.
Yes.
Yeah, no, I, I know. I've heard this for.
Yes.
And I still find it confusing.
All right, any other questions, comments, thoughts?
No.
Anybody, all right, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to set the water rate to seven dollars and eighty-one cents per one hundred cubic feet, increase of eight point seven percent for quarter ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, anybody?
Second.
All right, we, all those in favor? The ayes have it, going to, and do we have a motion?
Okay, make a motion to set the sewer rate to twelve dollars fifty-nine cents per cubic feet, which is three point six percent increase for quarter ending June thirtieth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right, are we on to action, item O? All right, I'm assuming.
Sorry about that.
No, no problem. All right, this is the consideration and possible action on a transient vendor license for David Brockman for the Antiques Textiles and Vintage Clothing, Vintage Clothing Store at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on June ninth, twenty twenty-three, and June tenth, twenty twenty-three, from eight AM to nine PM.
Okay, again, another one we've done before, so.
We have a motion, it sounds like.
Make a motion, we approve the transient vendor license for David Brockman for the Antique Textile and Vintage Clothing Show at the Sturbridge Host Hotel on June ninth, twenty twenty-three, and June tenth, twenty twenty-three, from eight AM to nine PM.
Everybody have a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right.
Okay.
So we are moving to action item Q, consideration and possible action on the stipend for Missy Rosen.
We have, you missed P.
I missed P, sorry. We're moving the transient vendor license for Wendy Collins, Collins Gifts, on June fourth, twenty twenty-three, from ten AM to three PM at the Sturbridge Host Hotel.
Okay, I make a motion that we approve a transient vendor license for Wendy Collins slash Collins Gifts on June fourth, twenty twenty-three, from ten AM to three PM at the Sturbridge Host Hotel.
Second.
All those in favor? All right, the ayes have it.
So, P is the consideration and possible action on the stipend for Missy Rosen, she is the executive assistant to the police chief. As you know, the police officers get an accreditation stipend every year, it's built into their collective bargaining agreement. The chief asked me for consideration on Missy getting a stipend because as his executive assistant, her workload for accreditation is high. I thought about it, and I said to the chief, well, the workload for her, for the, for the officers, it's maintaining it every year, staying up to date on the policies, ensuring that they comply with the policies every day when they go out on patrol. I did agree that in the years that we do the accreditation, Missy's workload probably does grow up dramatically. So what I recommended is that in that every third year cycle that we do an accreditation, that we would consider a stipend for her in the accreditation year, which is what we're currently in, we just currently completed. And he has the money in this year's fiscal budget to do that, he can afford that in this year's fiscal budget. So given that it wouldn't have a budgetary impact, he figured the same percentage that the officers get, but in her case, just on the accreditation year, not continued throughout.
That sounds reasonable.
Yeah, it's, you know, well, Mary Lou knows, those books are about this big, and just the administrative part of going through them.
Oh, I know.
So thank you for her hard work, do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve a stipend for Missy Rosen, Rosen, executive assistant in the amount of one thousand one hundred and fifty dollars for the years the police department receives their accreditation status.
Do we have a second?
Second.
You beat it to it, Mary, all those in favor? All right, so now we're moving on to the reappointment of Rebecca Mimo to the Sturbridge Council on Aging for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six.
Yes, and we support the reappointment.
Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you Rebecca for our hard work, we appreciate her. Article S, consideration and possible action on the reappointment of Annette Roberts to the Sturbridge Council on Aging for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? All right.
Let me, Jamie, can I interrupt, please?
Of course.
Lynn, there's a sticker here, but I don't. I do.
You don't, you do, but you do.
But I do now.
You do.
Who knows? All right.
Stat if you like to say.
All right, so I think we were on to Joan Chamberlain. We have consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Joan H. Chamberlain to the Sturbridge Council on Aging for a term to expire June thirtieth of twenty twenty-six.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor? All right. All right, we have consideration and possible action to confirm the appointment of Bonnie Brandt to the Sturbridge Council on Aging for a term to expire June thirtieth, twenty twenty-six. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? The ayes have it. All right, are we, V, are we pulling this too?
No, you have to actually sign the warrant, that's a, that's a Lynn one, actually.
That is an official, official.
What'd you do? Getting tired?
I'm talking at the same time, I'm right.
Yeah.
All right.
So this is, so you have to vote to sign the warrant.
All right, so everybody.
I make a motion that the board of selectmen vote to sign the annual town meeting warrant.
Second.
All in favor? I'll go slower for you, Mary.
The W is mine, I can start on that.
All right, go ahead, start on it.
Um, as you all know, in executive session, I had brought to you some preliminary terms of an MOA for our police department. You all had indicated that you supported the preliminary terms that we had. We had a couple of minor adjustments, but nothing that had any kind of substantive impact. It did go in front of the, whoops, police union for ratification.
Can't bend.
And I believe that they unanimously supported the MOA. So I'm pleased to share that, and I just need an official vote from the board to accept the MOA for the police contract. If this goes through, we will have all three contracts settled, and I'm really pleased that this one is settled before the current one expires. That's always a goal.
Nice job, Robin.
Thank you.
Um, that's not normal.
Yeah, thanks to our, frankly, thanks to our police labor union, who was, was very agreeable and very fair.
Yeah, we're very lucky to have the, all of our employees and all of your hard work on it, since you've come aboard, it's uneasy to adopt successor contract negotiations. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Nope, not DPW.
The ayes have it.
I think it's signed, but I need the MOA for the police department. Okay, I'll get you a copy for signature next time.
Okay.
Okay, but it's approved, it's fine.
All right, so we have, the next item is X, the consideration and possible action to accept a letter of resignation from Carol Mitchell from the Library Board of Trustees. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Thank you to Carol for all of her hard work. All right, moving to motion Y, we have, unfortunately have another consideration and possible action to accept a letter of resignation from Melissa Earls from the Library Board of Trustees. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
And do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, all those in favor? And thank you to Melissa for her hard work. Z, consideration and possible action on the contract agreement, Break the Ice Media Digital and Social Marketing, three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars per month. Robin, can you talk about this one a bit?
Just briefly, this is something that STA and Terry have been working on. This is part of, we had some earmark grant money, this is also part of STA's money for marketing. There was a, a process, a bid process, I think currently Break the Ice is doing, had done some temporary work for us. They've been pleased with the work so far, and this is a continuation of that.
So this all comes from STA funds and grant funds?
There's STA, there's, and I believe some of this is maybe coming from earmark grant, yeah.
Okay, any other questions? All right, do I have a motion?
So moved.
Uh, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Yes, okay.
All right, last, we have consideration and possible action on a one-day liquor license for Ragged Hill Cider at the farmer's market, that dates from June fourth of twenty twenty-three, to October eighth of twenty twenty-three, from nine AM to one PM.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? All right, the ayes have it. Um, all right.
I didn't wanna use red, though.
Um, do we have, all right, old business, Mary Lou, do you have any old business?
No, I do not.
Mr. Kaminsky?
I have no old, thank you.
Mary?
No.
Mary?
No.
Jamie?
I steal that pen from him.
All right, and then we have public service announcements, Mary, do you have any? Blanchard? Oh, not public service, new business, I'm sorry. Tired.
No, this chairperson, so it should be one of them.
Okay, so the.
New clerk is because it's correspondence.
Chase, do you have any new business?
Oh, to read it, that's why.
Mary Lou, do you have any new business? Mary, do you have any news?
No, but I have correspondence when we get to that.
All right, oh, I see. Um, that makes sense, all right, correspondence, Mary?
One letter, that's why I have it. It's to the selectman chairperson dated April twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three, from National Grid, regarding carrying out late winter-spring mechanical controls, foliage treatment, and other basal treatments on rights of way, which will pass throughout municipality, and passing it on to the chair. Fight.
All right, and then we are on to approval of minutes, beginning with April twelfth of twenty twenty-two. Does anybody have any comments, corrections?
Hold on, let me just finish this, and I wanna look.
While we're doing that, I'm gonna skip the citizens forum, because I think we have something here.
Yes.
Yeah, sorry.
She's been patiently waiting.
Yeah.
So I'm here for some help figuring out the dock.
Okay, could you, it's just for the people at home.
You need to say your address, you have to say your name and address at the table.
Oh, sure, but.
Sure.
All right, please just say your name and your address, thanks.
My name's Andrea Speed, and I live at two four six Big Alum. And I have a question, I have a neighbor who's moved in and has installed a dock so that the end piece is parallel to the shoreline, and part of the dock is in front of property that belongs to me, rather than his property. And when I talked to him about it, he said he talked to the town and that he was told the water doesn't belong to anybody, so he can put in his dock however he wants it. So I'm under the impression that you guys are the harbor masters and are gonna be able to tell me what you can and can't do installing a dock. And then if it's not appropriate to install the end of the dock in front of my property, I'd like you to communicate that to him.
Actually, we do have rules and regulations, I don't have the.
I tried to find them, but anyway, even, I don't, I.
No, it's, part of it, part of it, it does not project in front of other people's property. And it can be only so big and.
Yeah.
Extend out, so.
Why don't we do this, so you don't keep on, Robin, why don't you follow up with the regulations, figure out what's going on, and then we'll kinda go.
And so you, you'll communicate to him whatever needs to be communicated.
Does this person have a dock permit? We should probably start with that.
Yeah, that's where we've gotta start and see what happens, if there was a permit, I don't remember this board giving a dock.
Most people don't bother getting.
Probably did not, yeah, which.
But then once somebody complains about.
Right.
Dock going in and.
So now I have to hunt down.
Or it's too long, sometimes they try to make it too long, and then that brings it to our attention.
Okay.
I will follow in your name.
Just make sure we have your contact information.
Yes, can you just write down, oh, was that your address and your phone number, if you could, for me?
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, the minutes, we're back to the minutes, Mary, did you have something on the April twenty-twelve, twenty-two ones?
I was not here.
I meant that, Mary. Because she, she said she had something to look at. Wait, no, this one you were at, this is from twenty-two.
This is a whole year ago.
Whoa.
Yeah, so we have two from last April.
You're kidding me.
Take a look at them if you want.
Yeah.
That's why I remarked on it being twenty-two. Same thing from April nineteen, I didn't see anything, so you're looking to it.
I remember them, so I don't recall any. Yeah, no, it was mostly placing and supporting.
Yeah, I don't think there was much there.
Yeah, so.
And this is, yeah. All right, do we have any edits to the April twelfth, twenty twenty-two minutes?
I do.
Okay.
On page one forty, I guess second to the last page. It says Vice Chair Dowling would like to make a motion add a warrant article for tax relief. I actually made the motion, and it wasn't seconded.
Okay.
As opposed to that I would like to, so put motion.
Is that, okay.
And put not seconded.
All right, anything else on April twelfth? Do we have a motion to approve minutes, subject to Mary's edit?
So moved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor? Okay, moving to the April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes, did anybody else have any comments, or anybody have any comments on these? Hearing now, Mary, anything? Mary's?
Just give me two more seconds.
I'm good.
Okay. Mary Lou, Mary?
I have to abstain, I wasn't here.
Oh, right. What's that? Yeah, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve April nineteenth, twenty twenty-two minutes.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Okay, last but not least, March twentieth, those minutes, I was present.
While you're all reviewing, if I could take a moment, I just wanna thank Lynn tonight, and obviously Lisa for coming in, but Lynn really has had, of all agenda items, to have to step in on of all nights. Lynn really helped coordinate this, make sure everything ran smoothly tonight, so a big thank you to Lynn.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lynn.
And she always works with a smile on her face.
Always.
That's true, always.
It's true.
Mostly true, right?
I don't see that side of you, so you know what, just accept.
Just accept what you get, that's right. Sorry, I didn't even interrupt.
That's all right, do anything else on the March twentieth, twenty twenty-three minutes?
I have nothing.
All right, just Mary and Chase and Mary, do you guys want to make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to approve the March twentieth, twenty-two, twenty twenty-three minutes as written.
So moved. Okay, second, rather.
All in favor?
Yeah, I just have one question. I must have left early for this one?
You went to get that?
I was present.
Yes.